Read it.
Um, I am making this is just like, what was that? This is like, you know, five minutes.
Okay, bring those to what position?
Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the November twentieth twenty twenty-five meeting of the City Plan Commission. I'm Alfredo Borrego and I chair this commission. I call this meeting to order at one thirty-one P. M. Commissioner Badillo.
Thank you. A statement to the public. The City Plan Commission has sole and final approval, authority over subdivision maps which statutorily limited to ministerial examination of the application's conformance to all applicable code provisions. The staff report for an agenda item may include conditions, exceptions, or modification. The commission may approve the item with all staff report conditions, exceptions, or modifications, including additional measures regarding the item as imposed by the commission. Otherwise, the staff report with all modifications, exceptions, and conditions is approved, and the applicant shall comply with all provisions of the staff report. Commissioners will consider all agenda items other than subdivision items in the form of a public hearing. The normal process is as follows. First, the commission will hear a staff report followed by a statement from the applicant. Then members of the public may speak, followed by any final statement from the applicant. Finally, the matter will be closed for further discussion or a motion among the commission. The commission shall then make a recommendation that will be forwarded to city council.
Thank you, Commissioner Badillo. At this time, I'm going to take a point of privilege to welcome our newest commissioner, Mr. Dobrowoski. Did I pronounce that correct?
Yes.
All right. Welcome to our commission. And also, just to let you know, I was asked by staff that when you speak, speaking to the mic, state your name or your last name when making a motion or seconding or anything else, okay? All right. Thank you. Mr. Smith, changes?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I hope you're doing well. Kevin Smith with Planning Inspections for the record. There is one change to the agenda. Item two is proposed to be postponed until January twenty-ninth of twenty twenty-six. And that is on the consent agenda, item two till, until January twenty-ninth.
That's all?
That is it.
All right. Can I entertain a motion for the changes to the agenda?
Second, Apolaca.
We have motion and a second to change the consent, the agenda of today. Any discussion?
I want to ask, is that a, is that a public opinion, public request issue, or that's just city comments?
It, it's a private matter that is being coordinated.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. And it's just for the minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Reyes.
Second, Apolaca.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We, oh, before I go there, public. At this time, I'm going to open up to a public comment. If there's anybody on the phone, I don't see nobody in the public here today. But if there's any, anybody on the phone, star six to unmute. Public comment, one more time, star six to unmute. Hearing none, public comment is closed, and we move to the regular agenda, item number three. And for that, we have Mr. Fontes.
Sorry, just wait on the presentation. I think it should be in the, in the desktop. It's item three. Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the commission. So, I'll font this with planning and inspections. Item three on the agenda is Azam Estates involving a major preliminary application. Next slide, please. Thank you. Here's an aerial view of the development. This development is within city limits and is east of Mesa Street and north of Mesa Hills. Here we have the aerial imagery showing subdivision superimposed over the aerial. The applicant is proposing to subdivide fourteen point five acres of land into twenty-nine residential lots and three lots for open space. Residential lots approximately range from six thousand nine hundred square feet to twenty-four thousand six hundred square feet in size. Open space, open space slots total at thirty, three point two six acres in size. Stormwater drainage will be, will be conveyed from the lots to drainage easements to a nearby, nearby canal infrastructure. Access to the, to the subdivision shall be from Azam Drive, as it will connect to Barbary Drive. And this application was reviewed under the current subdivision code. Here we have an image of the preliminary plat. And the applicant is requesting the following exceptions pursuant to El Paso City Code. To waive the, number one is to waive the dedication of twenty-five feet of right-of-way, the construction of five feet of sidewalk, and five feet of planter strip along a portion of Azam Drive. Number two is to allow for the construction of Azam Drive as a private street in accordance to the street design manual. And number three is to waive the construction of five feet of planter strip and to allow for the sidewalk to abut the roadway along Barbary Drive. Then here we have the portion of Azam Drive that is being considered for the exception request. It is highlighted in red. And he, and then here we have the proposed cross-section for Azam Drive. As you can see, it is missing twenty-five feet of right-of-way, five feet of sidewalk, and five feet of planter strip. Here are the existing conditions for the proposed Azam Drive. Here we have the proposed cross-section for Barbary Street. As you can see, it is missing five feet of planter strip. Here we have the existing conditions for Barbary Drive. And the exception meets the criteria, the exception request to waive the right-of-way improvements meets the criteria under the El Paso City Code. And to, to conclude, staff recommends approval of Azam Estates on a major preliminary basis, and it also recommends the approval of the exception requests, the, the exception being requested from the City Plan Commission. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fontes. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Reyes?
Yeah. Why are they requesting a, a exception to reduce the right-of-way and sidewalk? Is it limited space there? Or why are we?
So, the first portion of Azam Drive is going to be, could I get the presentation up, please? The first portion of Azam Drive is meeting the code, meeting code requirements. But to answer your, your question, they're, they're asking for that reduction on Azam specifically to minimize the grading on the, on that side of the, of the mountain. So that, that's one of the reasons why they're requesting that, that exception. And then on Barbary Drive, that exception is just to, to match the existing conditions of the roadway.
Minimize the grading. So, if they can get the additional right-of-way and sidewalk, it's, what do you want, just minimize the grading? I mean, I don't, I, I don't understand what the, what the conflict is to, to, to request that. I mean, can it be done?
Yes. I mean, if the exceptions are approved, then, then yeah, it would, it would be, they would be allowed to, to build up, up, up until that on, to the twenty, twenty-three-foot right-of-way.
It's a new street, right? The new street, new subdivision?
Correct. Yes.
But what's, what's the limiting factor? I'm trying to figure out, I mean?
Yeah, i- if I can, Kevin Smith, for the record, I, I think the applicant can, can address some of it. But as, as Mr. Fonte showed in one of the pictures, can you show the picture there? That, that one? There's some pretty significant topography in this area. So, this is getting pretty close to what we term the mountain development area, which is where we really want to minimize the amount of grading that goes on to reduce the scarring on the mountain. And so, this is just one of the options that's being considered. But I think the applicant can probably.
So, you're squeezing the properties further into, and then minimizing the street to kind of avoid?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? I have a couple. On our backup, there was some concern from El Paso stormwater. Okay? There was a couple things, you know how you ask all the entities of El Paso if they, this and that, and there was some concerns? And one of them is, how are you going to convey that water to streets? And then from streets to the closest Arroyo? Is that correct?
Yes. So, per, per land development, land, our land development section didn't have any outstanding comments regarding the floor of, of the stormwater. But I can defer that question to the applicant if, if they can explain it in further detail.
Okay. And then the other one is, on that private street, you showed it just inside. Can you put that up again?
Yeah.
So, you said it was only the red?
Correct.
Okay. What city street goes into that?
If I might, Mr. Fontes, is Azam in its entirety proposed to be private?
Correct. Yes.
So, so the exception for the width is only in red, but the entire street of Azam is proposed to be private off of, of, of Barby, Barby?
Barbary.
Barbary. Thank you. That is correct. Yes.
So, that blue, that blue is going to be a public street up to the red, correct?
No.
No, the entirety of the, of, of Azam is going to be private. The only, the portion in red is the portion that has the reduction in right-of-way.
Oh, because you stated that was the only one that was private. That part was pri- okay. Got it. Understood. Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Fontes. Can we hear from the representative?
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioners Conde, Conde Incorporated. First, we do concur with all staff's comments and glad to entertain questions you may have.
I have a question.
Yes.
I assume it's not going to be left in its natural state. There's going to be some significant cut and fill?
That is our goal, is to reduce it. And so, you don't have significant cut and fill.
Are the houses going to be on stilts, pure and beam?
So, if you notice, there's a dashed line on the lots that are longer. That is our build-two line to prevent more cut. And so, the objective here is to, like, the hard part about this is it's not zoned in the P M D. It's zoned R three. However, the way we're treating this, as if it was in the P M D. That's why we're designing, so that street, the twenty-three foot wide street, that is your typical P M D street cross-section. We're just using what is typically used now, today, on the books.
So.
The only reason why we have it there is, the beautiful part about this is, as you get off Barbary, there is some room, some width. So, we have a gated entrance that we have to meander. So, you, if people can't get in there, they got to be able to have room to turn back around. That's why you see that modified section there, Barbary. For the first four hundred feet, then you see like a turnaround. We do that like we do in the P M D for fire department. Usually, every five to six hundred feet, we provide a turnaround. So, you see that. That's the reason why that is for fire department. And then after that, it really chokes in, and what you call the top of the slope gets very narrow from there on. And that's why we want the very modified P M D cross-section to reduce the amount of cut.
But that build-two line, you're going to flatten to that build-two line, and then after that, it's natural slope?
No. We're hoping the builders build correctly to the mountain, like you would in the P M D. So, you do retaining walls, tiered homes, things of those nature. You, you don't want to flatten these into typical street lots. No, you do not want that. That's not the way these are meant and designed for.
But it's going to be completely natural after that build-two line?
Absolutely. All that common open space is going to remain open space.
But you said that you hope that they do it that way?
Well, yeah. We, I, I personally don't have control over one builder over the other. But that's going to be something that the owner's going to be looking at within the covenants.
Other questions, commissioners?
And if I could just add on to that, too, is when it comes in for building permits, they will not be allowed to build past that line, since that's, as, would be part of the plat as well. So, if they propose anything over there, that is, would be, basically be in violation of the, the subdivision.
So, that won't just be privately enforced, that's enforced on your end as well?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Can you talk to us about the sidewalks and your requests regarding the sidewalks?
We're not waiving sidewalks except for that very small, again, the P M D already allows for this twenty-three-foot cross-section, which does not have sidewalks. That's what's, so we're just using what's already in the books. That's why you don't have a waiver for that. The only thing we're asking for a waiver for is Barbary's already built, and they have a seven-foot sidewalk and a seven-foot sidewalk. There's no five-foot sidewalk and a five-foot parkway. That's what we're asking for the exception, is that there is no parkway there. It's just a seven-foot sidewalk on both sides.
Mr. Conde, can you define P M D for us that don't know what it means?
Sure. It's, it's a zoning category called planned mountain development.
Oh, okay.
And it is meant to protect and preserve and reduce the amount of grading.
Thank you.
So, Barbary already has sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Can you adjust the water conveyance there?
Absolutely. Just like we stated before, we're trying to treat this like a P M D. Each, the street does not carry the runoff. The street's going to drain off to the lots and the lots to the, to the natural flow. You don't concentrate. And so, that's why that, if you concentrate everything, then you're right, you've got a concern. But our objective is, is like the P M D, is to drain this like it is naturally doing now.
Okay. That answers my question. Any other questions, commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Conde.
Thank you all.
Item number three is before us, commissioners?
Motion to approve, Apolaca.
Second, Uribe.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I.
Commissioner Hanson?
I would like to discuss the sidewalks. I'm not sure.
Now's the time to do it.
I'm not sure if I have a firm opinion on them. But can we pull back, can we pull up the aerial, please? So, if you look at the houses, I don't know if it's south, actually, but it's south the way that we're looking at it. It ends up being a really shallow buildable lot anyway. So, if we increase the right-of-way on those houses, I know that if it was a completely flat lot, effectively, it would decrease the size of the buildable area. But it's going to be a pretty shallow buildable area anyway. So, I don't think it makes the lots that much less desirable from, like, a builder standpoint. I don't know if it's an undue burden to require sidewalks. And I think it goes back to us not fairly imposing sidewalks across the board. So, I guess, I guess I have come to a firm decision. I think that we should require sidewalks in the subdivision.
Is there a question in there?
No, that was just my discussion.
Okay. Any other comments, concerns? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Bernice, roll call.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Badillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Borrego?
Aye.
Commissioner Hanson?
Nay.
Commissioner Uribe?
Aye.
Commissioner Apolaca?
Aye.
Commissioner Reyes?
Aye.
And Commissioner Dobrowoski?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can you give us a count, please?
Six ayes, one nay.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you, and want to wish you all happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Same to you and your family. Okay, we're going to move on to number four, other business. For that, I think we have Mr. Smith.
We do. Again, good afternoon, member of the commission. I'm sharing my screen. I, if you can, share the teams, please. This is the proposed schedule for twenty twenty-six. Personally, it is a little sickening for me that we're already talking about twenty twenty-six, but it is what it is. But our, our meeting schedule, as we typically have met, is every two weeks. And I think we've been able, able to manage this throughout twenty twenty-six. Our first meeting, which would be January fifteenth, would be our annual business meeting. That is a little different, where we're not going to have cases, but we'll have some informational presentations, some training, the election of officers, legal will provide training parks, planning, planning staff. And then the meetings, the regular meetings start two weeks later on January twenty-ninth and go until December seventeenth. So, we'd be, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this, if you have any.
You're right. Does that mean that the commissioners don't approve it? They can change dates and whatnot?
Technically, yes, but I, I think also, particularly, historically, ever since I've been with the city, is we've been Thursdays at one-thirty. And I think the biggest thing is, we're not going to be meeting on Thanksgiving next year, so.
We're not?
We're not. So.
Motion to approve.
Well, we're not doing it. Let's talk about it. Does anybody want to talk about it? I mean, those that travel, some of you that travel, some of you that take a lot of vacation, you know? And the reason I ask, the reason I ask is because sometimes we barely make quorum. So, if these dates don't work out for you, now's the time to say it, because sometimes it's bad that we don't make quorum. So, everything works out. Commissioner Apolaca?
Well, historically, it's always been Thursdays at one-thirty, so we ought to keep that.
I'll entertain your motion then.
All right. Motion to approve the schedule for twenty twenty-six. Apolaca.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the schedule for the year twenty twenty-six. I don't think nobody wants to discuss it anymore. Oh, oh, go ahead. Commissioner Uribe?
Yes, I appreciate if they can email us the, the schedule, please. I know they're probably going to do it anyway.
It's already on the.
It is?
Yeah, on the agenda.
All right.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now, I guess this is an important one because Mr. Smith came up to the podium. Mr. Smith?
Okay, again, I think for the third or fourth time, good afternoon, Kevin Smith with Planning Inspections. So, this is an update of a presentation I gave a, actually a few years ago. I did expand it a little bit, but as we have a couple of new members of the commission, and really a refresher, wanted to discuss a lot of the foundation on development in Texas. And what we here in El Paso base our, our, our codes off of our requirements. So, again, as the state, as we're within the state of Texas, the state gives us and all municipalities the boundaries which we have to work within. And whether it's development-related, whether it's other items, the state gives the parameters. And we, as cities, often have the ability to work within those parameters. So, again, as, as we've told you, and especially as we talk about subdivisions, which I'll get to here in a, in a few moments, property rights are, are very strong here in Texas. Whether it's what you can do as a commission, city council, and, and us as staff, too, is if they, if they meet all the legal requirements, we have to allow the development to occur. So, what we establish as part of cities is, we, we establish the minimum requirements to develop. There are other, other items where often, especially the subdivision team, when they come to you and talk about vesting, and this project is vested on X date, that is a legal requirement that comes from the state of Texas, that allows a developer to be ruled or reviewed under a code, you know, a form or code. Legal nonconforming is the zoning, I would say quasi-equivalent of it, where it allows development to occur even when cities or rules change on them, to allow them to be existing for a certain time. Eventually, the goal is to become compliant, but for whether it be lot size requirements, signage, we, we as a municipality cannot force them to change unless they meet certain criteria. And then with a number of items, we often say it is ministerial in nature. So, that means we are, are almost certifying that it meets code. These are items such as detailed site plans and subdivisions. As we saw on the previous case, there is some ability for the C Plan Commission to make judgments. And so, that's often why we'll remind the commission is, you may have to approve the subdivision, but the waivers and the exceptions, that's up to the commission to debate and determine whether it's appropriate to grant those or not. So, I'll first start on zoning. And the, the cities, the municipalities are regulated through local government code. Chapter two eleven is where the, the zoning lies. And in there, they, they state certain things about what cities can, can create. We can regulate items such as building height and size, lot coverage, the density, location of buildings. So, often, we, we talk about setbacks. We have to have those identified. And we have to have all those established. So, as you all know, and, and the urban planning and design team has been with you a, a couple of times, talk about the comprehensive plan, which we're in the process of updating right now, is zoning regulations must be adopted in accordance with a comprehensive plan. And as, as shown on the screen, there are a number of items, and this is per the, the state, that the goal is to, to address, such as less congestion on streets. You often hear us talking about the health, safety, and welfare. That is really the core of development. And we really need to make sure that development occurs in that, in the city, and in our instance, where we have ability in E T J, that it's safe and, and appropriate. And again, we want to make sure that we, we address it properly to, through not concentrating on population, and, and as well as make sure that there's adequate for the utilities, for infrastructure, just for daily life, that we often take for granted. So, what we do is, we create the comprehensive plan. That's a, a image of the current existing comprehensive plan, Plan El Paso. And the reality is, what we, what comes before the commission are code requirements. There are code requirements for zoning, there are code requires for subdivisions. Those have to be adopted separately, and that's through a separate process. But that's how the vision of a plan becomes a reality, is through our codes. So, what the state says that each city has to do is, we have the ability, ability to divide a city into districts. So, we have a number of different districts here. And as we note, especially, you know, for zoning, we have R one, C three, M two, and all the others. Each, each of those districts is different, and they regulate size, they regulate, regulate what you can and can't do on that property. But we also have to understand that even though we have these various zoning districts, each one's unique. And something that is zoned a certain way on one part of town, the same regulations have to apply on the other part of town as well. So, it's uniform. And each one's unique, and I, one of the key stresses that I want to convey as part of this is that the requirements have to be predictable. So, like I said before, when someone comes in, they have to know that I can build on any part of the town under a given zoning district, and I may be treated the same way elsewhere. The, the state also says that we cannot conflict. If there's something If there's something that we have on our books that conflicts with state law, we cannot supersede state law. We have to adhere to state law. So just recently, city council adopted some changes that were brought to you here a few weeks ago about changes for small lots, for apartments, and mixed-use residential. There was a time there where our codes were out of date. Because those ordinances, those state bills were effect September 1st. So we had a couple of months where they were out of date. We had to apply those regulations that the state said, even though our code was still catching up. And in our regulations is we cannot enforce these upon federal and state projects. Sometimes what the state does too is they set the boundaries, but then they give the cities the ability to choose. One of the items there for alcohol, for example, is if you're within 300 feet of a school, of a hospital, of a daycare, of certain things, is the state allows cities to decide, do we want to accept these or reject them? So it's up, in this case, it's a straight appeal to city council for those items. But that is one where even though alcohol uses are allowed in your appropriate zoning districts, if you're that close within one of those uses, they have to go to city council unless the owner consents in advance. So zoning is, again, what you can and can't do on the property. And I view it like a bundle of sticks, is each property has a certain number of sticks they can use. They can always ask to say, I want different sticks. You know, Kevin doesn't like my sticks, but I want the sticks that are over here. I can request a change. So that's where rezoning comes into effect of where we can say, I don't like the regulations that's currently on my property for whatever reason. It doesn't fit, or it's outdated. So I can ask for another bundle of sticks, if you will. And so that goes through the zoning process. Again, just because I asked for it doesn't mean I'm gonna be impacting Bernice. Here, it just means it's gonna impact only my property. And often, what is said before is as we look at these items that come before you, and we often provide recommendations such as conditions on a property, there has to be a reason why we're providing those conditions. What we often term as a rational nexus. So there has to be some reasoning behind it. So I can't say, even though I'm rezoning, say, a property here at City Hall, I can't say, you know what? Because of this, I'm required to go construct a bridge two miles down the road. There's no reason why that has to take place. And then obviously, we have federal law. Supreme Court ruled this case in 1922 that if we restrict business too much, then that's considered a taking, and we cannot do that. So we also have to be cognizant as we look at conditions about not requiring too many conditions as well. Because then, as I often tell staff, is then we have to start evaluating, is that the appropriate zoning district to be considered? As we shift gears to subdivisions, and these ones are regulated also under state law, under section 212 of the local government code. So what the state does, it allows cities to regulate the subdivision of land. A subdivision very simply is a division of land. I know growing up, I often thought of a subdivision as 200 houses, and that was my mindset. But that's not the case. It is simply a division of land, which could be as small as one lot. Because of the size we are, the state does allow us to extend our authority five miles outside of our state limits into what we call the extraterritorial jurisdiction, into the county land. So where we can have subdivision authority there. As a reminder, there is no zoning in a county, so that does not apply, but we can apply zoning, I mean, excuse me, subdivision regulations in the county. The state does allow some exceptions to plating. But again, those have to be stated in our city code, and that is within, that is codified in our code, as well as what is required of an application. So again, we're treating everyone the same, and that everyone is being predictable. The state allows the cities to determine who approves subdivisions. It could be the city council, and some cities and towns throughout Texas, some, it is the city council does approve it. Our city council has delegated that authority to the City Plan Commission for you to act on. As we often say, is that plaits have to be acted on within 30 days. That is acted on by the city. And whether it's, there are some items that may be approved administratively, the majority have to go to City Plan Commission for approval. And if it's not approved within 30 days, then that application's automatically approved. There are some, that 30-day period may be extended, which obviously we saw on an item today. But that has to be requested by the applicant, and has to be approved by the appropriate authority, in this case, the Plan Commission. So often, what is there is, as you review subdivisions, or staff reviews subdivisions, if an item is gonna be conditionally approved or denied, there has to be specific reasons why that takes place. Again, going back to how property rights are strong in Texas, it has to be directly tied either to the state law or a citation to local ordinance of why it cannot be straight approved. Often, the ones I've seen is it's maybe pending access for transportation purposes, maybe it's the extension of utilities. Those are some of the items that have come across in the past, why we may conditionally approve a subdivision. If an item is to be disapproved, we have to cite the section of the code why it is not compliant. And we need to identify that. And again, we cannot be arbitrary. Again, we need to be predictable. The requirements need to be predictable. And so we cannot say, I don't like Kevin, I'm gonna deny it just because. It doesn't work that way here in Texas. It needs to be, we need to have the same requirements for every subdivision that comes across. And again, if the word "shall" is here, and so what legal has often taught me is about words, words are important. So "shall" means you shall do this, you need to do this. And so the municipality needs to approve, shall approve a plat if it conforms to all the requirements in the code, it has access to streets and utilities, and is accepted. Again, as I mentioned before, the C-Plan Commission has within their purview the ability to act on exceptions and waivers. That is up to the C-Plan Commission. You may approve those, you may deny them. That is up to the commission. That is not a guarantee. So just as a summary, again, I view it like, you know, lanes. Is we have to work within the lanes that the state has created. We can work anywhere within them, but if the state has created that, we have to work within it. And it has to be focused on health, safety, and welfare. Whether it's the planning items that come before you in terms of the zoning and subdivision items, or even our building permits, it is all focused on health and safety. That is a key on why we do what we do. And there is, there has to be a predictable legal process for all of these. If something, if a property is gonna be rezoned, it has to be a predictable process that has to go through with notifications and proper hearings. And again, as often, even though we may want more, we can only enforce the minimum requirements. So if something exceeds that, great, but we as a city can only enforce the minimum standards. So that is a brief summary about what the state has mandated for municipalities. I'm here answering questions, and then I have some people smarter than me that can help me out if I need it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Commissioners, questions? No? Really? No questions? Questions? No? You got a question? Go ahead.
Kevin, good afternoon. So the Senate Bill 15 basically allows for smaller lots. So the city's really gonna make the final call, or is, or the city's gonna adapt to the state new ruling?
So we had to stay within what the state allows. So what that state bill said is the properties that wanna consider small lots have to be a minimum of five acres in size or more. Okay, so some of the areas of town where it doesn't meet that criteria, that would not qualify. If that land has already been subdivided, it does not apply. If the zoning does not allow single-family, it does not apply. A plat cannot have been vacated there. That does not apply. So again, those are the boundaries that the state said the cities have to comply. So as we look at that specific bill, a lot of it's on the periphery of the city. So a lot of the east side is already built out to the city limits. But as we look at the northeast and the west side of the city, there are some land there that is, that this could be pursued for the smaller lots. And so again, the state gave the boundaries, and we as a city have to comply with those.
So properties that are currently zoned do not qualify for that?
No, they may qualify. Again, they have to be five acres, meet all the criteria. But if it's zoned, it has to be zoned for a single family. Yeah, you're welcome.
Any questions, commissioners? Commissioner Hanson.
This wasn't in your presentation, but this is a question that I have every time it comes up. Sometimes it's like a cleanup subdivision plat for a building that's already there. How is a building built in the past that has, it's on land that's never been subdivided?
Previously, there were some exceptions that allowed it, especially over five acres. And this was over 10 years ago, that there used to be an exception. For if you're over five acres, you do not have to be platted if you have access to infrastructure and utilities and all that. But that went away about 10 years ago. So there may be times where a building is existing on a piece of land that has not been ever subdivided. There's also some times too where maybe we annexed the land many, many years ago, and for some reason, it has never been platted. And so every time they wanna do something, they would go submit a building permit. And if there's an item that's outstanding, such as it needs to be subdivided properly, or if it needs to be, we often say cleanup rezoning as well, that has to be addressed. We're not gonna go and say so-and-so is not compliant, but it's when they come to us and their specific criteria, that's where we can enforce our subdivision or zoning requirements on there. And 100% honest, sometimes they build without permits too.
Okay. I have a specific example because I don't think this lot is five acres, and I think it would have been in the city. Well, it would have been in the city at the time it was built. I'm not sure if anyone in this room is working on it, but 150 Sunset. It's, that's the address. It's on the corner of Sunset and Donovan. That building is probably 30 years old, and it came in front of us maybe three months ago for a subdivision, just like a plat. I don't know how that was ever built without a plat. It's just a question.
I would have to look into it, and each one's unique. Again, each case, whether it's a subdivision or zoning case, is unique. And so each one presents different challenges, and each one has a history that sometimes I'm not, you know, it takes a lot of digging to figure out what transpired over time. But we'd have to look at it specifically and see what happened there.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Yep. I do have a few. I noticed that every two years after the state legislature meets, they take more and more control of the municipalities. You know, being that, and it's sad because in Austin, they don't know us. Our state reps know us. But they're overridden, and what we do here in El Paso, I think we do for the best of our community, but the state comes and overrides us and takes more rights away from the municipalities. And I think that's very sad.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add on to that, that is very true, and often, as we review them, I'll just say Kevin's thought is let the cities decide for themselves what's appropriate. You know, again, once the state, like similar to Senate Bill 15, it may be a good bill, but let El Paso decide for itself if it's good. But obviously, with each legislative session, every two years, we're having to react to things. We submit comments, you know, whether we support, oppose a given bill. But once the state makes the call, that's where, again, we need to make sure we comply.
The other thing is, you had a picture up there about groundwater, but you didn't talk about it. It was one of the first few, and I just wanted to ask, use of groundwater by private entities. Define that, because in my house, my business, can I drill and get my own water out for the groundwater?
I might ask legal to help me out here, but what I believe is the, we're able to regulate things if it has access to the proper utilities or infrastructure. So our water, wastewater sewer is addressed primarily here in El Paso by El Paso Water. So those are being provided. I'm not sure if Russell has any, he wants to chime in on this.
Yeah, unless you live in the Upper Valley and have water rights in a well, pretty much your water rights are probably owned by El Paso Water, and you can't drill for water in your backyard.
So what you're saying is that all the water underneath our feet throughout all of the city, county of El Paso is owned by El Paso Water? Unless you have water rights?
Unless you have water rights, yeah. I think you'd, if you're in the city limits, probably most is El Paso Water, unless you have a specific well or something like that.
Talk about controlled by the state, not controlled by the water. Okay.
Well, I see people drilling wells, Waco tanks, and all out there by Montana, so I guess that's outside the city. So they're able to build wells, and these lots generally don't come with water rights, but they still are able to do water wells.
Again, this is specific under the zoning. So again, if it's outside Montana Vista by Waco Tanks, that's outside.
Five miles.
Yeah.
Outside the five miles.
Yeah. Well, it's even outside the city limits, because if it's zoning regulated, we stop at the city limits for our authority.
Okay. Another one is, local regulations do not apply to federal and state. There, what it tells me is, text on. Do they overrule the city on whatever they're gonna do?
You know, they're a state agency, so I believe so.
You would say so?
Yeah.
I would think that it should be more of, we wanna do this in the city of El Paso, we're text on. Let's work with the city, let's work with the county on those issues. And, you know, because I've asked to bring a presentation to ask specific questions about mainly sidewalks and roadways. And I guess we're at the mercy of text on, is what you're saying.
Yeah, and they'll be coming, and I don't wanna say we're at the mercy too, but we coordinate with them the best we can as a city. We have an agency here within the city that really coordinates closely with the state when there are federal projects or when there are state projects such as reconstruction of it too. We provide comments, but at the end of the day, I think to your point, is text on may decide something different, which has happened before.
And the reason I ask that is because we're coming in with I-10, and they ask for all this information and whatnot, and I'd like to see the city of El Paso, even the county of El Paso, along with us, the residents, say, hey, text on, this is what we want, blah, blah, blah. Now, having said that, I saw the presentation. Mr. Reyes was there too. We saw the presentation. And that presentation was awesome, and I liked it.
Well, in my experience, it comes down to a lot of times the maintenance of, you know, parkways. Text I will put in vegetation, but they'll have the city to maintain it. You have to enter agreements, and the city is already overwhelmed by having to maintain so much. So they have to have an agreement. The city will agree to maintain it. They'll put it in. In Montana, there's gonna be no vegetation at all. But back in the day, Emma Acosta, she told text on, I want vegetation. So we put on that, Montana, we put like 400 trees. They're out there now.
Yes.
But the city had to agree to maintain those trees and water them.
And you're absolutely right, because in the part right there from Fox Plaza on Center median to almost Delta, I asked text on to do the medium, and they did. That was a few years ago, but the city maintains them. And that's where the partnership comes in. I'd like to see more of that partnership happen between the city and the county and text on. And it works well. It works well.
Yeah, often they have other priorities. Their job is to move traffic. Frankly, whereas the city, we want to have good environments for all users, whether it's pedestrians, whether it's cyclists. for all users, whether it's pedestrians, whether it's cyclists, transit users. So that's where we have to sometimes get into these partnerships where Tech Stop may construct it, but then the city of El Paso would maintain it. And that's happened on a number of streets throughout.
Any other questions, commissioners? No? There's going to be a test in two weeks, okay, so. Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, commissioners.
I'll entertain one more motion.
Motion to adjourn. Apolaca.
Second. We have a motion and a second. I'm sure you guys don't want to discuss it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.